All right. Calling this public hearing to order at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023. This meeting is being taped or recorded for transcription purposes only and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. Any personal conversations should be saved until after the meeting so that those attending virtually will be able to hear. Any board member with a monetary interest or has conflict, including expert communication, should disclose now. And now I will ask the secretary to call the board. Calabro?
Here.
Who?
Here.
So let's name.
Shaffer.
Here.
Rubel.
Here.
In the audience are alternates Schrader and Romanowski, trustee Augustine, zoning inspector Wilson, and is anyone on?
Trustee Sweattick.
Trustee Sweattick is virtual. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Right, if we can start off with getting the legal notes read. The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the administration building located at 1410 Ridge Road, which is on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Routes 3 and 303. Subject of the hearing is as follows. An application for similar use findings, AP 0272, was submitted by applicant Ethan Rogers, potential buyer of property owned by Bama Limited at 1605 West 130th Street, Hinkley, Ohio. 44233, permanent parcel number 01703C06004, requesting equipment rental with outside storage at said location. Inspection of this property will take place on Saturday, February 18th, 2023, at 10:00 AM. Zoning reference, Chapter 4, Section 4.15, similar use finding in Chapter 6, District Regulations, Section 6I2 Light Manufacturing/Industrial Subsection 6I2.2.K, permitted uses of the Hinkley Township zoning regulations. Copies of this application and other supportive material will be available for public viewing from the date of this notice to the date of hearing at the zoning office located in the administration building at 1410 Ridge Road, Monday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Tuesday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Friday, 9:00 AM to noon. Information may also be found on the Hinkley website at www.hinkletwp.org under Community tab, News and Events, titled Board of Zoning Appeals Public Hearing. All interested parties are asked to attend this hearing or to send written comments to the Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals, PO Box 344, Hinkley, Ohio 44233. Log into www.hinkletwp.org for Zoom option to observe/listen only. Must be in person to speak slash participate in meeting. Okay, thank you. And has the notice been sent to the appropriate property owners?
Yes.
Okay. The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals acts within the authority of Section 519 of the Ohio Revised Code and exercises its powers as provided under Chapter 7 and 13 of the Hinkley Township zoning regulations. All public hearings are open to the public. All persons wishing to testify must do so from the podium, must identify themselves and give their residence address, and must be sworn in. Evidence and testimony must be pertinent to the hearing, and it is at my discretion to limit personal comments, personal attacks, opinions, and/or representative statements or testimony or evidence previously given. Disrupted persons will lose the right to remain at this meeting, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Since the Hinkley Township zoning regulations does not have specific language or code in our zoning resolution under the I-2 Industrial District for an equipment rental business, it has prompted this similar use finding hearing this evening. Therefore, the task of this board this evening is to decide the values or the merits of a similar use finding and whether to approve or deny the request. This is a hearing upon the application of Ethan Rogers of Moffett, Moffett, sorry for the misspelling, properties, a potential buyer of the property located at 1605 West 130th Street, Hinkley, Ohio, for a similar use finding as required in the Hinkley Township zoning resolution sections to property being considered by the applicant. The applicant has submitted a packet that the board has, which includes original similar use finding application, a narrative, a permission letter to the property owner, a concept plan, and also site map, all related to the similar use finding request. Notice of application was properly given in local newspapers, and the application has been available for public review and comment. I will now ask the secretary if any phone calls or emails or anything have been received regarding this.
No.
Okay. I note for the record that non-written communication made by known or unknown persons not under oath at properly noticed hearing is not accepted by the Board of Appeals as testimony. And each member of the Board of Appeals has been provided a copy of this application and a copy of each of the other documents submitted in support of the application. And at this point, if we can pull the board, whether they have received the packet and also conducted a site visit.
Calabro?
Yes and yes on Saturday. To visit.
Who?
Yes and yes on February 18th, Saturday.
Celestine?
Yes and yes on Saturday, the 18th.
Shaffer?
Yes, and inspected on the 14th.
Rubel?
Yes, and inspection on February 18th.
Right. Written communications from persons not present this evening may include communications that are not made by affidavit. Because these communications are made by persons not under oath, they are not accepted by this board. I also note that written communications may include some written by, writing by affidavit by persons that are not present this evening, and therefore cannot be subjected to cross-examination. These affidavits, therefore, will not be given much weight, if any, in the decision of the board on this matter. This board does have the power to grant the applicant's request for a similar use finding. And again, most people that wish to speak must do so from the podium and must state your name and address. And all testimony must be given from the podium. At this point, I would like to ask the applicant to step up and if you can.
Good evening, board.
If I could, please swear you in.
Sure.
I, and please state your name.
Ethan Rogers.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer unto that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for having us this evening, board. I appreciate it. My name is Ethan Rogers. I'm with Moffett Properties. We are the prospective buyer for the lot and the subsequent developer for Sunbelt. Got Parker Hudson here with me from Moffett, as well as Travis Crane with Davy Resource Group, who's representing us as a civil engineer. He'll be available for any technical questions we may have. Started here. I believe Tom sent out this presentation earlier this week to you. I did make some tweaks this morning, so it may be a little different, but should be able to follow along. So just wanted to tell you a little bit about Moffett Properties. We're a commercial and industrial developer. We work with multiple national tenants across the country. And we work with them to locate land and build facilities for them. And then we would in turn own the land and then rent them back the facility. So we will be a long-term holder of this property. And we have been a preferred developer of Sunbelt since 2013. We're here tonight for the similar use finding. I took some excerpts from your regulations here, just so we could all be on the same page. We understand there are seven kind of thresholds here to meet a similar use. So we just wanted to make sure those were laid out for you and that we were doing our part to meet those in this discussion. The zoning district is light manufacturing/industrial. We had, obviously, the permitted uses are listed there. And it's, in our opinion, that we do meet similar use as laid out in your regulation here. So with that said, I would like to tell you a little more about Sunbelt and our project to kind of meet this discussion. Sunbelt Rentals is an equipment rental company. You've probably heard of them and they have, they're most known for their small tools, general tool store. So you know, something as small as going and getting a chainsaw or something on the weekend for a homeowner all the way up to contractors running large, heavy equipment. This facility will be an earth-moving solutions and an aerial work platform, co-locate for them. So that'll be a larger equipment and, you know, contractors will be the people renting equipment at this location. The total investment that's going to be made in Hinkley will be around $7.5 million. And their, Sunbelt is making a 10-year commitment with options to extend their lease for two, five-year terms. So it could be up to, up to a 20-year commitment here in Hinkley. Sunbelt Rentals is, is, like I said, a national company. They kind of have these four pillars of of things that they like to do and show their communities how they're doing, doing business. So environment, the very environmentally conscious community engagement. They like to hire local people for jobs and engage in the community. And then again, local people and skills is one of their pillars. And then also self-government. They, they like to make their own rules and govern themselves on those rules. So they're, they're very, they, they hold themselves to a high standard. Sunbelt Rentals has 10 locations in the greater Northeast Ohio area. Like I said, they have about 16 divisions. But most of these stores would be general tools or power HVACs or a power and pump. And the one we're proposing here is an earth-moving solutions and aerial work platform. And it will really be the first of its kind, which is exciting for Sunbelt. It's an exciting opportunity. A little introduction to the site here. You guys sounded like you visited it on Saturday, so you know where it is. But it's right there, 1605 West 130th. It's just shy of 12 acres. And then we have the zoning district and code listed there, and it is vacant. And in an effort to make it clear what the surrounding uses are to help our case for the similar use, Great Lakes Construction is a major construction company in the area. As you likely know, they are one of Sunbelt's biggest customers in the area. So it is a great fit to have them next door. Mobile Mini has the, the storage containers, roll transporters, a trucking company. And then to the south of the site, there's several other businesses that are similar industrial uses. And what we're proposing is a 24,000 square foot building on this site. It will have a fuel pad, or I'm sorry, a fuel island with a above-ground fuel tank for fueling up equipment, and then a detached wash bay in the rear to wash off equipment. Around the building will be concrete. And then everything to the rear of the property will be a gravel storage yard. We use, we call it in North Carolina, ABC stone. It's aggregate-based course. But it's basically an impervious stone yard that does not allow a lot of dust and redding to happen. Here's some architectural elevations of what the building will look like. I have some photos later in the presentation. You'll see. But this is basically two, two of our normal footprints put together to make one larger 24,000 square foot building. That's more elevations there. They have roll-up doors all the way up and down for the, for the equipment to go in and out of. This will be the office layout, conference rooms, restrooms, and then, and then a larger warehouse space, and then an interior wash bay as well. This location will be closed on the weekends and their hours are 7:30 to 4:30 PM. And then they will have roughly 40s employees on staff within the first year. This slide shows some of the equipment that Sunbelt would be renting out of here. Like I said, this is an earth-moving solutions division. So it's, it's your excavators, dozers, backhoes, skid steers, and tractors and the like. And then some more equipment on the aerial work platform side would be the boom lifts, the scissor lifts, the, the one-man drivable lifts. And then, as I alluded to earlier, these are some similar projects. This is one we did close to home in New Bern, North Carolina. This is a general tool store. But you can see the, the gravel layout, lay, lay-down yard in the back where they would store equipment when it's on-site. And then you can see the paved parking lots there in the front. I believe we have another angle of that site as well. Yep. So that's from the side. You can see the fuel island in the back. This location had propane. We will not have that at this Hinkley location. And then again, this is more, more examples of our general tool store. This is right at our office in Lake Forest, North Carolina. But that gives you an idea of what the architectural features of the building will be. I'm circling back to the similar use finding slide there. We wanted to reiterate that we do believe we, we meet seven criteria that we do believe it's consistent with the purposes and intent of the zoning based on the, the type of operation that they run. It's similar. Great Lakes Construction being there is a perfect match for Sunbelt. The operation is compatible with other permitted uses. Again, it fits right in the area there. It will further the objectives of your industrial zone. It will not cause substantial injury or impair the present or potential uses of properties in said zone. Sunbelt has those green initiatives. They're, they're conscious about exhaust and fumes and keeping everything clean. And it would not be detrimental to the public health and safety. And then we also believe it will not generate substantial additional traffic congestion. These pieces of equipment go out for rent, you know, no less than a month at a time. It's not like there's trucks coming in and out every day and, and creating a lot of different traffic. So Sunbelt doesn't make money if the equipment's sitting on their, on their yard in their rental business. So they, they try to operate it like an 85 or 90% rental capacity. So we, we do believe we, we meet that criteria as well. So. And we'll open up to questions.
Okay. I got, I got several of them.
Sure.
When I was reviewing the, the package,
Sure.
I went online in Ohio here in Cleveland area and ran off a couple of Google shots, which has been distributed to the rest of the group.
Sure.
And, you know, it shows all the lifts and that in the yard. And that seems like the yard's quite filled with a lot of equipment. Is that, wouldn't it be the same scenario here? I mean, you're showing it the nice gravel area with nothing on it.
Sure.
But these here look like they're pretty well covered with equipment.
Sure. So the, the pictures I had there, that was a facility we had just finished. They hadn't moved in yet. But yes, there will be equipment in and out. Like I said, if, if their equipment is sitting on their, their lot, they're not making money. So they don't, they obviously want it out on job sites working. But, but yes, there will be equipment.
Will it be, I mean, will the lot be pretty much full at all times, or you're hoping it's not?
We're hoping it's not.
Okay. Okay. Second question, you've got this big warehouse or garage.
Sure.
What is going to be in there? Is that just storing equipment? Is that working on equipment? What's, what, what are you doing in there?
So that's for basic maintenance of the equipment when it comes back from a renter who's had it a long time. You know, they do the oil changes, check the spark plugs, make sure everything works, clean it off in the wash bay, and then put it on the yard until somebody calls to rent it back. Any major work to this equipment typically happens on the job site. They have technicians that are based at this location and then are sent to the job sites to work on the equipment. So any major repairs or breakdowns, it costs way more to bring it back and then take it back. So they send out crews to do the, the major work.
Okay. So all your equipment will be outside. Okay. And the similar use findings, number two.
Yes.
It says, "It is similar to one or more permitted uses in the zone within which it's proposed." How are you similar to one or more uses, being that you're a rental facility?
Sure. So the one I keyed in on was I, repair and sales of commercial vehicles. We'll be obviously maintaining commercial equipment. And the rental would, would serve as a similarity to sales.
Which one is this now?
This would be letter I under 6.6I2.2, permitted uses, repair and sales of commercial vehicles.
Oh, okay.
And then also letter E, equipment repair services. Again, we'd be doing maintenance on equipment.
But that's, that's repair and sales. This is rental.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying. How is that similar?
Well, instead of, we, the, the, instead of the sale being a full turnover, it's, we're selling a rental period. So I find that to be similar. And then again, back to E, equipment and repair services. And then building construction contractors. The equipment is being used by contractors. Great Lakes being the one on the end of the street there.
Because you can write, but they're an operating company.
Correct.
Then on number three, its operation is compatible with other permitted uses. So the same question, how is it compatible with everything else in the area?
Sure. Again, I go back to Great Lakes. They're one of the biggest customers of, of Sunbelt. So they're compatible. They work off of each other. They'll call Sunbelt and say, hey, we need an excavator on this job site, and they'll be right there to send it for them. I saw Great Lakes has that big yard behind their building.
Right.
A lot of equipment. So it'd be no different than them pulling a piece of equipment out of there and us pulling one out on the same street.
I look at compatible as use. I mean, your use is rental, their use is operation. They put in pipelines. They do all kinds of stuff like that. So if they're an operation, you're sort of a rental. So I'm just trying to figure out your idea of being similar type. I mean, it's the same type of equipment. Yes.
Sure.
I'm just trying to get an idea of that.
Yes. I mean, again, I go back to them renting the equipment to perform the same task. Sunbelt may not be doing the, the task with the equipment, but they're providing the similar use in the park to take that equipment. It'd be the same, the same type of activity.
Okay. Now, looking at from the street view, being similar, everything we have out here right now. And like I said, we took a ride around, we Googled it, and everything, all the yards and everything are pretty much in the back of a site of the roads.
Sure.
How is this going to look from the road?
From 130th?
Yes.
So it will be, we could.
I mean, you see, you see the building.
Correct.
But I mean, is it going to be very visible with all the equipment back there?
No. So typically, in, in this scenario, we would have some sort of opaque fence around the storage area. So it'd be a six-foot non-seethrough fence. But from 130th, you'll see our building, the, the elevation I showed there.
Right.
And a parking lot. And then there'll be gates on either side where you wouldn't be able to see past into the storage lot.
Okay. So basically, the only thing we should be seeing would be the lifts.
In theory, if they're, if they're leaving them up, yes.
Which they usually do, from what I, from what I understand. Okay. That was my question. I just want to see visibly.
Sure.
Because everybody else is sort of buried back there. So the people don't see this.
Right.
Yeah. I know there's a lot of stuff back there. Actually, there was more stuff back there than I realized.
Right.
When we did our drive-through and when I did the Google shots.
Sure. Yeah. So we, we're open to working with you guys on, on how to best barricade that storage, if that's something that we want to look at.
Okay. I'm looking at that as a similar type use for the idea that it's similar, that they have their stuff pretty much away from the general public.
Yeah, I'd agree with you.
Okay. That's my question.
Okay.
Okay. And this is just going to be commercial rental. There is no retail rental, correct?
Correct. There, there will be little to no customer interaction at this location with somebody coming in to, to rent a large piece of equipment. There will be some of that, but most of it will be a phone call and they'll say, we need XYZ in this location.
Okay. Now, when you were saying that the fences are opaque, what percentage should we spend?
We have done all sorts of opaqueness levels depending on the jurisdiction. We're open to, to really any. And we can do a straight wood fence if that 100%, not see-through, if that helps. Or typically, it's a chain link fence with the slats in it. So that, that provides mostly, mostly not see-through.
Any landscaping?
We are open to, to any landscaping requirements that the jurisdiction would have.
Okay. So if, if it goes this far, you are open. If you go to the point where you're approved here, you are open to all this down the line.
Absolutely. So our, there is a, you probably saw that big wetland in the front of the.
Yeah.
So that will provide some sort of a buffer. You'll still see our building beyond that. But yes, we are, we're definitely open to any landscape requirements that, that Hinkley would have.
Okay. Because I know Great Lakes, you know, they're required to have landscaping along with the fencing and all that.
Sure.
Do you do any?
Yeah, right.
Do you do any third-party service? Like if my skid steer broke, I could bring it in or?
No. Sunbelt only services their own equipment.
Okay.
So you wouldn't be able to bring a piece there to get it worked on. Similar, like you probably think of like a, like a dealer, you would take it back to the dealer to get it fixed. This is not, this is purely rentals.
Okay.
Kind of to that point, as far as service. I think you have in your narrative, there will be no loud, or there will not be any loud noises in the evening. So most of the loud noises during the day, are they inside where the repairs are being done?
Correct. I'll, I'll work on it.
Other than the equipment being moved, obviously.
Sure. All, all equipment will be worked on within the, the large warehouse in the back.
Okay. So none of that will be outside?
There will not be.
And that will be within the hours we're talking about, or do they work on equipment after the hours?
They do not, unless it's an emergency situation. But that's.
So yeah, you have here, I think, between the hours of 6:30 AM and 4:30 PM. Anyone else? I, I think that kind of covered.
Yes. I just have one comment, not really a question, but it does say within our zoning code that we do, there is an outdoor equipment storage area that there is required to be a screen from view of public streets or private streets by landscaping walls or fences that are at least six feet high and at least 50% opaque during twelve months of the year.
Right. Which will come down the line when it's submitted. So it's not a condition that we put on. It's already, yes. I agree.
But to that point, we are aware that we're, we're good.
Okay.
Anything for Tom.
Tom, do you have anything or anyone else? Thank you.
No problem. Appreciate it.
My only comment is that should you approve this tonight, of course, go through a site plan review and we'll get into this fence and we'll get into landscaping and so forth. I'm glad you asked the question because it's also relevant to what you're talking about tonight. But all those things, as you know, Bill, they'll all be covered in site plan.
Right. Okay.
Sounds good.
Anyone else? Any comments? Okay. Since Section 4.15, similar use finding was referred by Ethan, I think, to kind of, typically we do the Duncan factors to, but I don't think they are appropriate in this situation. So I think what we'll do, and we'll pull everyone on the board, go through the seven criterias that are stated in Section 4.15. And if you could just answer yes or no, whether it meets this criteria. And we'll sort of do it in a similar way as the Duncan factors, except it'll be these. Sorry. Are you ready to kind of step on through? Okay. So, um, number one, it is not inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning resolution.
Rubel?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Celestine?
True.
Who?
Yes.
Calabro?
Yes. Uh, number two, it is similar to one or more uses permitted in the zone within which it is proposed and located.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Celestine?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Calabro?
Yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
All right. Its operation is compatible with other permitted uses within the said zone.
Celestine?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Calabro?
Yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
All right. It will further the objective of said zone, the objectives of said zone.
Who?
Yes.
Calabro?
Yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Celestine?
Yes.
Uh, it will not cause substantial injury or impair the present or potential use of the properties in said zone.
Calabro?
Yes, it will not.
Rubel?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Celestine?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
All right, it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience and welfare of the township.
Rubble?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
The last name?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Clevero?
Yes. And lastly, it will not generate substantial additional traffic congestion or other other permitted uses in said zone.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Yes, as stated. Yes.
Yes.
Rubble? Yes.
All right. At this point, I would like to state that any person adversely affected by the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals. May appeal to the court of county, please, of Medina County on the grounds that such decision was unreasonable or unlawful. And if you're ready, maybe you can do a resolution.
Okay, an application for similar use finding, A P zero two seven two. Was submitted by applicant Ethan Rogers, potential buyer of property owned by Fana Limited. At sixteen oh five west one hundred and thirtieth street, Hinkley, Ohio, four four two three three. Permanent parcel zero one seven zero three C zero six zero zero four. Requesting equipment rental with outside storage at the said location. Zoning reference chapter four, section four dot one five, similar use findings. In chapter six, district regulations. Six dot one two, light manufacturing slash industrial. Subsection six one two dot two dot K, permitted uses of Hinkley Township zoning regulations.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Before we take a vote, I would like to explain that a yes simple majority within with a quorum president is in favor of the applicant. A no simple majority or a tie vote denies the applicant's request. So at this point, if we, let me take a vote.
Clevero?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
The last name?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Rubble?
Yes.
All right, so your similar use finding has been granted, and you have one year from the date of this hearing to begin construction. Or to act upon your request, anyone adversely affected by this decision has thirty days from the date in which the minutes of this hearing are approved to file suit or appeal. Meeting minutes are typically approved at the next regular meeting, upon approval of this hearing minutes, such minutes will be posted and available at the township board site. And if we could just take a brief recess to get your form signed. Oh, so it doesn't matter, we can adjourn, sure. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
Show a move.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
No, so we are adjourned at seven thirty-four on Wednesday, the twenty-second.